I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School Board, School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and the notice that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, at the time of 6:00. I'd like to turn some time over for our invocation to Mr. Dason Williams and then our pledge with Ms. Teresa Wagaman.
Please join me in a word of prayer if you so choose. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to gather here to serve the students and administrators of this school district. Father, we acknowledge your overwhelming grace and mercy that is continuously bestowed upon us despite our shortcomings, our continuous shortcomings. Thereby, we humbly ask that you decrease us so that you may increase in us in hopes that we will bestow the same grace, kindness, and mercy on one another this night and throughout our time in this life. Let us continue to strive to be as you in conduct, character, and conversation. In closing, we ask a special blessing on all the families affected in this health, in their health, finances, and spiritually by this pandemic. A wise man seeks wise counsel. In so, we seek you and the professionals provided by you for guidance, understanding, and comfort. To God be the glory. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag?
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you, Mr. Williams and Ms. Wagaman. All right, item two, awards and recognition. A special district recognition, Read for a Better Life Initiative.
All right, well, this is a always a special night when we can celebrate reading. We kick off our Read for a Better Life Day with a celebration during our board meeting and then it carries over tomorrow onto our campuses as we'll have numerous people reading to our students. Now, tomorrow it might be more virtually than in person, yet every day is a great day to celebrate reading. We know that it, the impact that it has on children. And so, tonight, although we couldn't bring a whole group of students in here to be read to as we typically would, we do have a treat as we're going to share a book video. But prior to that, we have Ms. Sarah Blakelock to introduce this item.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. As you heard from Dr. Knoll, we are excited to start our Read for a Better Life Initiative again this year. This initiative encourages all adults to read 30 minutes a day to any child in their life because we know that is one of the single most important things we can do to help them educationally. And so, as you heard from Dr. Knoll, we have a video treat tonight since we do not have students here with us in person. And then, following the video, when you review the consent agenda, you will approve the Read for a Better Life resolution that is presented to you each and every year. So, without further ado, watch the video.
And I think there'll be some faces and names that we know very well.
All right.
School's First Day of School. Story by Adam Ricks. Pictures by Christian Robinson.
That summer, they dug up the big field and poured the foundation and set brick on top of brick until they built a school.
A sign above the door read Frederick Douglass Elementary. "That's a good name for me," thought the school.
Most days, a man named Janitor came to mop the school and buff his floors and wash his windows.
This is nice, the school said to the janitor. Just the two of us.
Won't be just us for long, said the janitor. Soon, the teachers will come and then you'll be filled with children.
The school creeped. Children, all kinds of children. They'll come to play games and to learn.
Oh, said the school, will you be here?
You'll see me after the school day is over, said the janitor. Don't worry, you'll like the children.
But the school thought that janitor was probably wrong about that.
Then they came, the children did, and there were more of them than the school could possibly have imagined.
They got everywhere. They opened and closed all of his doors and lockers.
And drank water from his fountains and played on his jungle gym. So, that's what that is for, thought the school.
Some of the older kids gathered by the school's back fence and showed each other their bored faces.
This place stinks, said one, and the school gasped.
I hate school, said another with puffy hair. To the agreement of his friends, the school sagged a little.
One very small girl with freckles didn't want to come inside the school at all. Her mother had to carry her.
I must be awful, the school whispered to himself.
Later, he squirted the puffy-haired kid in the face and then felt bad about it afterward.
He watched the kindergarten kids sit on one of his rugs.
The teacher said, as we go around the circle, please tell us your name.
There was an Aiden and a Max and a Bella and another Aiden and an Emma and a Kayden and a Chloe.
The small girl with freckles was next, but she wouldn't speak. She only stared at her shoes until the teacher moved on.
I don't like school, she whispered into her lap.
Well, thought the school, maybe it doesn't like you either.
The children were in their chairs finally, but just as the school was starting to relax, his fire alarm sounded and all the children exited and walked to the other side of the field and stared at him.
He was so embarrassed. He held his doors open for them when they returned. Sorry, he said, as the first child entered.
Sorry, 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 he told them all, even the girl with the freckles.
At 12:00, the school was filled with food. At 12:30, the school was filled with garbage.
At one table, a boy told a funny joke and another boy laughed so hard that milk came out of his nose.
Now I'm covered with nose milk, thought the school.
He had to admit that it was a pretty funny joke, though. Even the girl with freckles liked it.
After lunch, the kindergarten kids learned about shapes. A rectangle has four sides, said the teacher.
One, two, three, four. And a square has four sides, too. In fact, a square is actually a special kind of rectangle.
Wow, said the school, I did not know that.
Afterward, the children made pictures with glitter and paste. The girl with freckles made a picture of the school. It looks just like me, thought the school.
Except glittery. It's like she's known me all my life.
Do you think I could have your picture? The teacher asked her. Don't tell anyone, but I think it's the best. The school thought she was probably right about that.
The freckled girl smiled when the teacher struck her drawing onto the school wall with a pushpin.
Ouch, said the school, but he didn't mind, not really.
At 3:00, the parents came to pick up the children.
At 3:30, janitor came to pick up the school.
I was full of kids, the school told him. And I heard a joke and I accidentally had a fire drill, but everyone was nice about it.
And I listened to a classroom and learned about shapes.
You had a big day, said janitor. Do you think, the school said, do you think you could invite everyone to come back tomorrow?
Especially that little freckled girl. Janitor nodded. I'll see what I can do.
Later, janitor sat on top of the school and they watched the sun go down.
In the beginning, I didn't know what I was, said the school. I thought I was your house. Nope, said janitor. I, I suppose some other place gets to be your house, the school added. Janitor nodded. That's true, but you get to be a school. That's lucky.
And the school thought he was probably right about that.
It was a great book and if I could mention one other thing from that book, one of the ladies-
My job is to make college-
Here it again.
There it is. One of the ladies that you saw was Ms. Carol Ann Demerit. She's the mother of David Vedder. And I believe it's today, but I know it's this week, that David would have turned 50 years old. And so, that's the namesake of our David Elementary. So, it's a special day and we're proud. She's very, his mother is still very engaged with us as a school district and very engaged with David Elementary, but I wanted to note that as well.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Dr. Knoll. Thank you for all of those that's participated in the reading that's going to be going out tomorrow as well. It's, reading is important. It's very important. It's also fun to get in front of those kids and read in front of them, even though we're not doing that face-to-face this year. It's still fun. So, I commend everybody involved in that and encourage everybody out there listening and in the room to go out and read as well and show what you can, how you can change lives than just reading. So, all right, item three, citizen participation. Ms. Godfrey, do we have anybody signed up today?
We do.
All right. Please keep in mind that while this meeting is held in the public forum, the purpose of this meeting is for the Board of Trustees to conduct the business of the district. If during public comment, an issue is mentioned that is on tonight's posted agenda, the Board will defer its discussion of this issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any subject that is not on the Board's posted agenda, the Board cannot deliberate or make a decision. It can only furnish specific factual information or cite existing policy in response to any questions. Speakers who have signed up to address the Board during public comment must make all comments to the Board of Trustees and not to the audience. If your purpose is to seek some type of remedy, the Board cannot discuss or respond to your concern until you have compiled with the appropriate district policy. The Board has specific policies under which the Board considers complaints. Accordingly, the Board will not hear complaints or derogatory comments about the individual student or staff during public comment. Information about how to file a complaint is located in the district's website. Any speaker who fails to comply with these guidance will be given one warning. If the speaker fails to comply, the podium microphone will be turned off. The speaker's comments will not be streamed and the speaker will not be allowed to continue addressing the Board. The Board expects that everyone in attendance will conduct themselves respectfully regardless of whether they agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Interrupting speakers or this meeting will not be tolerated. To ensure that the Board can efficiently conduct a district's business, each speaker will be given three minutes to address the Board. Each speaker's time will be displayed on the screen around the room. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Godfrey, will you please call our first person?
Rod Hammer.
Obviously, I'm Rod Hammer. I am here today to talk about, just briefly, on CRT and masks. I spoke with Mr. Hines at the administration and about the Golden Hammers article on one of the Assistant Superintendent's comments around critical race theory. And it sort of sounded like there's workarounds to be taught in this school with that from the video that was presented. He explained that that's not really what was going on. And I appreciate the time he spent with me and talked through it with me. I guess I want to, I want to voice my opinion that this is a great country and y'all have a wonderful responsibility to teach our children and teach our children about the greatness of our Constitution. And to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer that we had was wonderful. These things are important for our children to understand. To be taught that someone is more important because of the color of their skin or less important because of their color of skin is absolutely wrong, period. And my mother's an immigrant. My father's family's been in the United States or here for probably 385 years. They came in 1630s. And so, I see both sides of this. My mother's family was driven and killed. My grandparents were orphans because they were Christians in a Muslim community and were driven across Turkey and killed. The United States of America found out that these children had been taken and put into homes as slaves and came in and took those children, put them in orphanages, and raised them according to their religion. This is the type of country that we are, respecting each other and each other's beliefs. And I guess I want to thank you if you're supporting it. If you're not supporting it, you're supporting critical race theory, I'll do my best to figure out who you are and donate and try to get you off the Board. But that is, that, I wanted to thank you for, and the administration, if you're weeding that out. The other one is masks. I appreciate the fact that the kids are not wearing masks. I travel for work. I did not travel one month since this whole thing started. That was April of, April of 2020. I go to job sites, I go to offices where we have our most problems are where people wear masks religiously with COVID. And where we have our least problems is where we have a lot of hand sanitizer and people taking care of cleanliness around that. The mask thing, I think it's because they're touching their face all the time, we've had more problems than anything. So, generally, we do a fit test on masks to keep the concrete out. We don't do that with masks. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Diane Daniels?
Last month, Skeeter did call me. He said he was going to call me and I appreciate the time and I believe we had a very respectful conversation. And I felt, I understood a little bit more about what was going on and I hope you saw my point of view as well.
Yes, I did.
After that evening, though, was the night that Dr. Knoll had a video on requesting people to wear masks. After the conversation we had, I found that interesting. The Board has a lot of power. When you send out an email or when you sow a video conference or a video to the public, parents listen to you. And I hope that you're taking that responsibility seriously. For six months now, I've been coming and speaking. Some people know me by name, by face, about masks. We have brought statistics, science, many of us have spoken. And to see that science and that statistics not being considered when you're putting out a video requesting everyone wear masks, when the science is behind, they don't work. So, I would appreciate it if that you would reflect deeply when you send out emails or videos to the parents as to the content of that and how much influence it has. And really, are you the physician that should be stating all that? I think it's wrong. Again, that's just my opinion. But coming six months in a row, I know there are other people in this audience who agree with us for the past six months. In regards to education, I just spoke with Bethany and she, I was part of getting the pocket constitutions to all the eighth graders for the district. And Dr. Knoll approved that. They were free. And I was glad to hear that she said they have all been delivered. So, I'm very excited about that. And the fact that the school needs to get back to the education, reading, writing, and arithmetic. We need to get away from the critical race theory and get back to what educators do best. I have family members that are teachers in this district. They are fantastic and they tell me every day how many people they work with that are terrific. We need to embrace that and get back to the basics of what we're here for, to educate our children, not to push our personal preferences on what we think should be taught. It's reading, writing, arithmetic, and history. If you get back to that, you will see the children grow immensely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jonah Wolfle? Lisa Mendez?
I don't even have questions. Apparently, questions aren't allowed, so I just wanted to-
No, they're not. We just can't answer, we can't answer any questions.
You can ask.
Yeah, you can get up and speak, though, wherever you are. I heard your voice.
I just want to have a little conversation.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Okay. There you go. All right, moving to item four, Consent Agenda. Do we have any, have a motion?
Mr. President, I would ask that-
One moment. We need to remove one item from the-
I think that's what, that's what you're going to do.
Oh, sorry.
There. You can do it if you want. I want to make sure it gets done. I would ask that we remove item I, Consider Adoption of Resolution Approving the Investment Program and List of Qualified Investment Brokers from the Consent Agenda, and consider it individually, please.
Okay, we have a motion.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, all of those in favor? Show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Abstentions, very good. All right, moving to item four I, Consider Adoption of Resolution Approving Investment Program and List of Qualified Investment Brokers. Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of that item as a standalone.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
All of discussion.
Oh, any discussion?
Why do we remove it?
Because I, I need to show that I'm abstaining from this, from this motion.
Fair enough.
It's not my employer, but it's a sister company that I, that I work for that is part of that.
Understood.
So, good question, though. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed and abstentions? Very good. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I move approval of the remainder of the Consent Agenda as presented minus item I.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed by the same sign? Abstentions, very good. Thank you, well done. We would make Ms. Galatasaray happy.
There you go. All right. That's what we're here for.
All right, item five, Administration. Receive Attendance Zone Updates for Elementary and Intermediate Schools in the Conroe High School feeder zone. Dr. Knoll.
Okay, we're at that point as we prepare for the opening of Annette Gordon Reed Elementary to begin the rezoning process. And we'll have our gurus of rezoning, Ms. McCord and Dr. Hines, that will help guide us through this process.
President Hubert, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll, thank you for allowing us to start the process of the Attendance Boundary Committee for Gordon, Annette Gordon Reed Elementary. Tonight, we are meeting to give you information. We'll have a meeting tomorrow of the committee. And I present to you a picture of a computer rendering of the Annette Gordon Reed Elementary School. As you look at this, you'll see the school. It is very much the same as Hope Elementary. It will have a different facade. This will give you an idea of what it will look like when you approach the entrance of Annette Gordon Reed off McHale, McHale Road. So, the school itself will be opening in the August of 2022. We're looking at around 950 students. So, we have not decided. We'll find out through your recommendation and hopefully through the help of the Attendance Boundary Committee whether it will be a pre-K through four or a pre-K through six campus. It'll be on McHale Road. And here's an interesting picture. If you look at this, this is from the northeast. And there's a number of different things you can see. You can see McHale Road as you go from right to left, from bottom to top. You can see McHale Road and if you go 2.9 miles down the road or up the screen and headed south, that will be Stewart Elementary. So, that'll be a point of reference. You can also see FM 2854 at the top. And note that it is McHale Road on this side, which corresponds with north of 2854. And it becomes Fish Creek Boulevard when I cross over 2854 and go south. As a former principal, one thing that stands out that I like is all the extra queuing space. It's great to get cars off the road, off McHale Road, and it'll help in the morning and help in the afternoons. Another interesting tidbit, if you look to the left on the screen, which would correspond to east, you will see a little bit of the land that we have. We have land to potentially add another school on this site, presumably an intermediate school, but whatever campus that you saw fit to add on this particular site. So, that is Gordon Reed. Mr. Foster will present you a picture in a few minutes that's a little more advanced. This is where we are, a good look at it from the northeast. Here is a satellite view to put into perspective the entire Conroe High feeder, really from I-45 and going to the west. The yellow square will denote Gordon Reed once again, McHale North of 2854, Fish Creek South. And there are some schools that will really be involved in this process that are worthy of mentioning and pointing out. And that includes Stewart Elementary, located at the bottom of your screen. Also, some other ones of interest include Cryer, Giesinger, Rice. And then, you can also see Conroe High School, Conroe High School ninth grade, Sam Houston, and Reeves. It's a good image. To really do justice to this, I need to do a quick clockwise tour of the elementary feeders that make up the Conroe High Campus, Conroe High School feeder zone. So, I'm going to do this at this time and I will start in the lower left-hand corner on the southwest side. And that would be number 57. 57 is Stewart Elementary. One thing to keep in mind as we go through the process is at this time, Stewart Elementary is a pre-K through six school. So, it is pre-K through six, not pre-K through four, and that is really important. One thing you see with Stewart right now on the western front of our district, it takes up a wide swath of elementary pre-K through six attendance boundary. And you see going up Fish Creek, where it becomes McHale, you see 64, Gordon Reed, which is why we're here today. It is not represented by an attendance boundary, but that's why we're here, at least for this part of this meeting. Going to the east, you'll come to number 10 and you will see Giesinger, represented in blue. So, you see Giesinger in blue. If I come south, number 27, I will see Reeves and it's represented by the semi-dark brown shading for the attendance boundary. You'll also see Sam Houston Elementary, number 14, downtown or more noted in the downtown area. If I head back north, I'll see Anderson. Anderson's number one, at least on this rendition. And it is represented by the yellow attendance boundary. I head to the east, I'll see number 49, which is Patterson. It has a wide swath of land that feeds into Patterson. And then, I can go south and I can see Runyon at number 21 in the attractive teal color. And then, I go south to number 50, where you can see Bonnie Wilkinson. And Bonnie Wilkinson is in the brownish, I would call that brown, at least brown, at least shade. Then, I go to Armstrong Elementary. I go to number two and that's located up on Gladstill, close to 45. And then, finishing at our tour, we'll go to BB Rice, number 19, in the light green. And obviously, the ones that are closer to Annette Gordon Reed may be more intricately involved in the zoning process, but it's important to see the whole system of elementary schools that make up the Conroe High feeder. I'm going to move on and like I said, it was important to note that Stewart is pre-K through six. So, because of that, it is, it's helpful to take an abbreviated tour, much shorter than that tour, of all the schools that make up the intermediate schools that feed into Conroe High. So, to keep things consistent, we're going to start and we'll start in the lower left-hand corner with number 57, that Stewart Elementary, pre-K through six. I show Annette Gordon Reed at 64, which could be pre-K through four or could be pre-K through six, depending ultimately on whatever your recommendation is. I head east and I'll find Cryer Intermediate. It's number 41. And it's kind of hiding behind Giesinger there, not in real life, but on this screen. It's hiding behind Giesinger as number 41. If I head almost due east, I'll end up at Bosman, number 49, which has a really impressive purple area of geography, which makes up its attendance zone. And I finish up with Travis, which is number 14 in the more downtown area of Conroe's district. So, that is a tour of the elementary, intermediate schools, their locations, and the attendance zones. I've included this because I believe it's really important. And if you look at this, the shaded areas represent areas of geography where we're having rapid, fast growth within the Conroe feeder. And if you see it, the first thing that you should probably realize is it's all over and it represents all quadrants of the feeder. One thing that's interesting, you may have seen it last week, the U.S. Census Bureau came out in the city of Conroe by the U.S. Census Bureau from the years 2010 to 2020 is one of the top 10 fastest-growing cities in the United States of America. And there were four cities actually in Texas, including us, Le Bronsvilles, Frisco, and McKinney. We were the only one in the greater Houston area that was in the top 10, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. And I think that's a tip of the hat to the city of Conroe and Conroe High School and just the people that make up our area. So, it is important. So, if you see the map, you can see that Stewart is located in a fast-growth area. That's mainly going to be Wood Forest. And if you head up, you can see that through no coincidence, Annette Gordon Reed is also in a very, very fast-growing area. So, those are the challenges and we're trying to play chess, not checkers, and look down the road. And so, Dr. Hines is going to take over from here.
Chess, not checkers. Thank you, Mr. McCord. Just to kind of review a few things, you know, the reason that we most frequently have to do rezoning is because we open new schools to deal with growth. And so, that's the case this time. Sometimes we have to do it and we go back and make some tweaks or adjustments based on crowding. And we did a little bit of that last time when we did the Candy Creek feeder zone. So, we opened Hope this year. We actually touched Patterson and we touched Anderson a little bit on the east side. And I anticipate that there'll be similar need to do some movement across the Conroe feeder in this process. We ended, just to kind of touch base on enrollment and growth, we ended the 2020-21 school year with enrollment of 65,428. On September 16th, our enrollment was 66,785. And if we include the 700 students that are in- and eighty-five and if we include the seven hundred students that are in our virtual program, our enrollment is sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-five students. That compares to on that same date, a year earlier, we were at sixty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-one. So we're more than three thousand students, more students at this time than we were a year ago, just to put that in perspective and that's quite a bit.
So we still get to average fifteen hundred a year?
That's right, we got, we got, we made up. We did two years' worth in one year, basically. Our district-wide kindergarten through fourth grade enrollment was twenty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-two and again, I just didn't count the virtual program, but those students we do, we do use in our planning documents because we use Geo coded. So when we do our planning, we actually plan on where people live and so we include everybody. And so it gives you an idea that, that puts us at a capacity of almost ninety-six percent utilizing eighty-nine portable classrooms in our elementary programs throughout the district. And so to put that in perspective, and I've been doing this for years, I feel like anytime we're above ninety percent, we're full. We're filling it at ninety percent because capacities vary based on programming. For example, if I'm a school with a bilingual program, instead of having eight second grade teachers, I might have four and four. So suddenly when I do twenty-two to one, it doesn't come out as efficient and we might have to add another teacher and so we need another classroom. And so it, it, it just works out that it varies from year to year and program to program about how many we can fit in a building. Our intermediate program was at ten thousand and fourteen, we were at ninety-five percent capacity utilizing fourteen portable classrooms. Our junior high school enrollment was over, over a hundred percent, ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight utilizing thirty-six portable classrooms. I will point out that we do have an expanded Morehead replacement coming in two thousand twenty-three that'll create five hundred additional junior high seats and it is, we'll pick up intermediate seats that same year with Veterans Memorial Intermediate coming online. We did add some seats at the high school this year with College Park and the Woodlands. We are working on adding on at Conroe Nine that you'll see later in the facilities update and of course, we're doing major work at Conroe High School, but currently we're at ninety-one percent capacity in our high schools utilizing twenty-eight portable classrooms. So we're running close to full there. In all, we use, we utilize one hundred and sixty-seven portable classrooms throughout the district and that's roughly equivalent to about three thousand seats or three one thousand student schools. So just to put that in perspective, we are, we are full. The two thousand and twenty-eight projection for the Conroe High School Elementary is roughly nine thousand three hundred and seventy-four students and opening of Gordon Reed Elementary, we will have a K four capacity of seventy-nine hundred. So that translates to a projected need of roughly another fifteen hundred seats in the next six years that we're going to have to come up with. So we know we're going to be building some more schools in the Conroe area. And two thousand twenty-eight projection for intermediate schools is four thousand nine hundred and four and with the opening of Gordon Reed, assuming it's a K through six, we will increase that capacity to roughly thirty-one hundred and fifty students. So that translates to a need for about seventeen hundred and fifty additional seats in the next six years. So that's two intermediate schools. So just to give you an idea that we know we're going to have some need for additional campuses in the coming years. So as we go through this process, we know first and foremost, we've got to solve for Stewart that is projected to be at over two thousand students by two thousand and twenty-eight. So it's, it's probably slated to be our most rapidly growing school. It's currently at a hundred and fifteen percent with two portable classrooms, but it's growing rapidly. Giesinger is our second on that target of where we need to address. It's currently at a hundred and twenty percent capacity with seven hundred and eighty students and they're utilizing eight portable classrooms. We are keeping an eye on Patterson, that's creeping up on capacity and if you're aware, there's a new neighborhood going in right across the street from Stockton Junior High and we know in two or three years, we'll be feeling that. Wilkinson also is a school that we, we know that we're, it's getting close to capacity. It still fits in the building, but they are projected to be at eleven hundred in two thousand and twenty-eight. Also filling up is Runyon Elementary and it's a small school. If you're familiar, it's a pretty small campus, but they're roughly full right now at five hundred and eighty-five students and they're projected to be at nine hundred by two thousand and twenty-eight. Cryer Intermediate also is projected to be over capacity at eleven hundred and so is Bosman. And so as I mentioned, we're going to have some need for some future intermediate seats. But we'll be looking at those campuses as we kind of work through this process. You know, we'll, we're gonna, we've got to also be mindful and I'll, and I'll mention it, that we are always mindful of what's coming next and what we just did. So for example, the students that are at Stewart, I've been there, that are in the sixth grade, started pre-K there. So we haven't, it opened that year, so we haven't had any rezoning involving Stewart. So we won't be moving anybody to a third school. But we did touch, as I mentioned, we touched last year Anderson and Patterson a little bit, so we want to be mindful of where we were, make sure we don't move anybody. We just moved and then we'll be looking at this process as we go through. But we know we're going to need some future schools, so sometimes we know we need to build another school. We don't want to move people, only to move them back. So we're going to be kind of playing that chess game, three or four moves out to try to get a feel for not overly moving people too many times. So again, our objectives through this process is first and foremost, we're going to create a boundary that's going to populate the school and give us a little bit of room for future growth. We're going to also provide relief for Stewart and give us some room for some future growth and those are our main objectives and we're definitely going to look at how we can address Giesinger's needs. This is a, you know, and you, you're all veterans of this process now that you know it's, it's a challenging process because schools are communities and when you break up that community, it, it creates stress. Families often have a history with that school. They often chose to live where they lived because of that school and so we, we understand that process and we don't take it lightly, but this is a necessary part of growth, right? We just have to do this from time to time. But we do really look at all the options and try to be thorough. To do that, we don't do that by ourselves, we go out and get help. And so we have principals and parents that participate in the process. They form our nucleus of our committee and as Mr. McCord mentioned, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow and really start, start the process along. We have also district office people that participate as support and, and provide advice or give us some insight. I'll point out, for example, Mr. Davila participates, our director of transportation, because we look at what we're doing and how it's going to impact bus routes, for example. So Ms. Terry Ross participates from information systems because we need help running all these reports that give us projections. And so we have a lot of people that help with this process. Dr. Upshaw participates and we keep an eye on special program impacts and, and how those things work. So we have a lot of people that offer insight. So we do look at a lot of things as we go through the process. We're going to look at our ca, our campus capacities, we're going to take in input, we're going to look at demographic factors, we're going to look at feeder patterns and history. Geographical proximity is something we pay attention to, location of what's there, what's not there, you know, how frequently we move people, where there might be natural boundaries. You know, you saw on the map, you know, twenty-eight fifty-four runs right through the middle. It might be a nice place to start looking at. It may work, it may not work, but we'll start, start there. We don't go too much further to the west before we're actually in Montgomery ISD, so we don't go too far west, so we'll have to come back east, right, to pick up our enrollment. So we know that is the reality. We're also going to look at future schools and projected future enrollment of where we think we're growing and then transportation patterns. So a lot of things, we're going to try to minimize impact. To do this, we have also created a website and we're, we have it up and running and I think we'll show you what it just looks like, just briefly. We do have a website, so on our, on our, this is accessed through the main page. We have information about the process. We have a place where people can submit feedbacks. We take ideas. They can tell us, you know, where their students attend, what they like. We'll start, we did this last year and I think it was one of those things that kind of came out of the pandemic that we learned and we did that worked pretty well. Last year, we just started putting up all of our scenarios instead of just some. And so people could see like, there's twenty-five of those things and, you know, it can make your head spin, but it helps you at least see the progressions as we work through them. So I imagine we'll do something similar where we just put up a lot of maps. We also have some committees where we'll present. This comes really in kind of three phases and we're starting our first phase. And the first phase is, hey, this is happening, we're going to open a school next year, we're starting to look at the zones. The next phase will be back in November where we have some scenarios to show. We'll be back to you in November. And then the third phase is when we come back and show people what we're thinking and make sure we have it right. We also have a frequently asked questions section where people can look in and generally if we get questions to the, the webpage, we'll add some. And so just kind of a little Q and A. There's our website and there's also a zoning worksheet right there that we won't open for you, but it's an Excel that people can open and it gives you the, the tables that we use that people that want to, as I say, if you want to play at home and create your own boundaries, you can do it at home and then submit them to us.
That's, that's dangerous.
And so we, you know, we do, we get some good ones. We, we also get some bad ones, but we do occasionally get some good ones.
I'll cut that neighbor out.
Yeah, yeah, we do get some of that, like I want to, I want to zone around this street right here and, but, but it's, it's kind of interesting, we do that. We also have the whole access to the pass report and we have the current maps for reference up there and we'll probably add a few other documents as we work through. We have another document where we calculate mileage and some other things and then we'll add and then we can go back to the, I think we go back to the page. So the next, whoop, there was one more slide. This is it. Really just wanted to kind of give you a quick overview tonight. We're just kind of starting you off, kind of the kickoff of this. We're doing the same thing with our committee. We did an orientation last week, we're actually starting our process now. We'll go back out with our first public meeting is on the twenty-eighth and so we'll start sharing information and it's already gone out in newsletters in the Conroe feeder and then we'll come back in November to give you an update of where we are and then we hope to be back with a final recommendation to you in January. So that's kind of, those are the kind of the phases that we're working through and really I'm here to answer any questions or Mr. McCord can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from our board?
Good job. So far.
Yeah.
Exactly. Waited till he started drooling.
No, thanks, Dr. Hines. I know this is, it, it's fun. I always enjoy just hearing the, the different scenarios and I always thought that everybody wanted to go to the new school, but a lot of, a lot of kids say they, they like their teachers and they like where they're at. Parents certainly do, so it's always a, an interesting time, but appreciate all the effort and work you put into it, you're in the whole team. Thank you. All right, moving to item six A, receive the two thousand twenty-one elementary and secondary summer school report. Dr. Knoll.
All right, we'll head from our assistant superintendents for our schools, Dr. Winkler, Dr. Medford and Mr. Coulson.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. This evening, we're pleased to bring to you a summary of summer school two thousand twenty-one. As you recall, we were unable to provide the full scope of services that we normally do in the summer of two thousand twenty because of COVID. This summer, we knew that it was more important than ever to be, to bring these strong programs to our students, not only to combat learning loss due to COVID, but acceleration and enrichment opportunities that our students love and deserve to have. Before we begin with our presentation this evening, we would like to highlight the incredible efforts of each and every department responsible for the success of our summer school programs. It's like opening a small district for sure. This includes our custodial, child nutrition, communications, police, finance, human resources, PMS, federal programs, technology, special education, transportation, and of course, our amazing teaching and learning department. We want to give a special thanks to our Director of Elementary Education who's with us tonight, Ms. Lisa Garrison, for coordinating and leading the charge to make our summer school happen and I think she's hiding somewhere in the back. Yeah, she is. She's hiding. This is truly an effort that requires meticulous planning and most importantly, a commitment to student success. So we're very proud of our programs and we are excited to bring them to our students this year. So to begin with, we're going to talk about elementary. We had locations at Ford, Glenlock, Houston, Mylum Rice, and we also served extended school year services at Rice. We have assistant principals who serve as summer school principals and they did an outstanding job this year. Allison Brown is our assistant principal at Grangerland Intermediate and Elsalis is at Lamar Elementary. Katie Mo is at Austin Elementary. Kristel Marshall is at Vernon Woods Elementary and Debbie Dodd is at Rice Elementary and Amy Owen is one of our special ed staff members here at Central Office. So looking at our programs, we had, starting, starting with our bilingual and ESL programs, we serve pre-K through second grade in these programs and it really focuses on language development, but also those content areas of reading and math and we look at English and Spanish for bilingual and ESL. This year, we served eight hundred and seventy-two students in the bilingual program and two hundred and sixty-eight students in the ESL program. And these programs ran June seventh through June twenty-ninth, so we got started right away, like right after school started, ended, we got started with summer school. We also had Passport to Learning and KidQuest. These programs are a lot of like, a lot alike. The funding is just a little bit different and we served a thousand thirty students in our Title I program and in KidQuest, we served two hundred and four students. We also offer robotics where the students get to experience the first Lego League, which is very popular throughout our entire district, all the way through high school, and we served a hundred and twenty-one students in that program. And extended school year services, this is for students with special needs and their art or their admission, review dismissal committee decides on whether extended school year services is appropriate or not and they go in two different sessions and then we serve ninety-nine elementary students in that program this year. So if we look at funding, any of our title funding and of course, our S R three funding is federal funds and so these were our expenditures. Of course, a large chunk of our money went to transportation to make sure that students could get to summer school, which is very important. And the other large portion was in our staffing, just as it is in the normal school year. So looking at those locations that we mentioned, we had over two hundred teachers, fifty-four paraprofessionals, fourteen administrators, seven nurses, which were very important, especially this summer, one nurses aide, ten instructional coaches and one librarian who did an amazing job over at Sam Houston Elementary. And now we're going to look at our middle school programs with Dr. Medford.
Good evening. We also had some amazing assistant principals serve in our summer school locations. We had Linda Brasler serving at Grangerland, Pam Britton at Travis, Denise Quayle at Vogel, Julie Roth at Knox, Kevin Solberg at Pete, and then we also combined, Amy served our fifth and sixth graders and then Jennifer Youngblood had our E S Y, junior high kids at Pete. So part of our kids were served under that Title I program that Dr. Winkler talked about, but we also, unique to middle schools, is reading and math camp, which is an intensive targeted reading and math program for our fifth grade students. So we served two hundred sixty-three students in that program. And then our junior high course offerings, a lot of those are, are online accelerated initial math credits, so giving them credit for seventh grade math, Algebra I, Honors Geometry and then eighth grade pre-algebra. We had a hundred fifty-four students attend those online accelerated initial math credit courses, which is an increase of almost thirty more students this summer from last and then we have five hundred thirty-seven total students that attended junior high summer school for course credit and that is also a little over a hundred students more than the previous summer. So a lot of students took advantage of those offerings. And so for an overview for us at our locations, we had eighty-nine teachers, eighteen paraprofessionals, eight and a half administrators, two counselors, four nurses, two nurses aides, eight instructional coaches and a librarian. So high school, Mr. Coulson.
Good evening. Last January, when we started planning summer school two thousand twenty-one, we knew that based upon last year's experiences in virtual education and last year's summer school, in which we were limited to a virtual, we felt like this would be a big year for secondary summer school and it turned out to be just that. We're very honored, blessed to have two great administrators, Wendy Spears, who's currently an assistant principal at the Woodlands High School. She did the high school session at the Woodlands High School and then Jennifer Youngblood handled the extended school year at Pete. Kind of kudos to all of the administrators, whatever level, in attracting teachers. As I mentioned, last year was a very challenging year. Sometimes we forget as we get into the next school year, how challenging it was, not only for students, but also for staff. Those principals did a great job of recruiting teachers to work summer school. Like Shelley said, teachers had about a week off from the time that regular school year ended until we kicked off summer school and it's a pretty intensive experience in summer school. It's eight hours a day for the high school kids and eight hours a day for those high school teachers as well. So we were very pleased with the job they did in recruiting staff. We had various programs, initial core, credit offerings, these are students trying to work ahead. We offered a variety of courses and you can see them there. Funding, most of our, the high school experience, just like the elementary and intermediate, we funded it with S R funds. Interesting thing to note though, through the use of S R funds, we were able to provide about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. to note, though, through the use of S R funds, we were able to provide about $425,000 in credit recovery scholarships for those students who had failed one or more courses during the regular school year to come up and try to get back on track. So that's a look at our, our funding for the high school program. For the 2021 high school session, we had 74 teachers, five paraprofessionals, four administrators, two counselors, and nurse, nurses aide, and the librarian. Again, they did great work in providing services for our students. In summary, we had 1,376 students participate in high school programs this summer. That's about a 500 student increase from the summer of 2020. And those 1,376 students earned 3,600, there were 3,658 course enrollments in summer school. 82 students participated in the extended school year. About 98% of the high school courses taken were completed successfully. And then there were 422 initial credit offerings, which included both high school and then the junior high program that Dr. Medford offered. So it was a great experience for our students. In an overview for all of summer school, we served over 5,146 students at 12 different locations. So, thank you.
Just as perspective, Splendor I S D, our neighbor to our east, has about 4,500 students in their entire school district. And so you can see that we, it is, as I mentioned, it's opening an entire school district in the summer and then closing it back down again. It's a great team effort by everybody.
There are a lot of benefits to it, especially in the credit recovery. We have a very low dropout rate as a school district. And a lot of that is due to our offerings during the summer, where students can make up credits and kind of get back on track without feeling so behind and potentially dropping out. So it's a great service to our students.
Thank you. Thank you for those reports and all the work. Any, any questions or thoughts from the board?
I just want to say outstanding job, and a momentous effort. And I know it's a collaborative effort. And kudos to everyone. Year over year, you guys pull it off and pull it off beautifully. So great job, everyone. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Well said. All right. Moving on to item 7A. Receive capital improvements update.
All right. Mr. Foster.
Mr. Foster.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to bring for you, for you our, an update on our capital improvements we have underway throughout the district. And I'm going to start with Creighton Elementary. This is an overhaul, pardon me, an overhaul of Creighton Elementary, which is everything, this summer was everything inside the building. So this time, we want to talk to you a little bit about what's going on outside the building. Here, you can see progress on the roof. So we've re-roofed that entire campus while we were working on the inside this summer. So we're nearing, nearing the completion stage of that roof. And also, the good news to report is the groundwater storage tank and the pump systems for the fire sprinkler system have been delivered and assembled. So with a little help from Mother Nature not sending any more storms down the Gulf Coast, Entergy will bring us some power. We need to power this thing up. And then over the next couple of months, so we'll be firing up this system, which will allow us to activate the fire sprinkler system that was installed over the summer.
Is that a new style roof you got going on there?
Talking about this picture here?
Yeah.
Now, this is what we would refer to as our belt and suspenders approach. It's a two ply mod bit roof with a white cap sheet. So it is reflective to help us on the inside of the building. But it's a roof system where we've been installing for about 15 years or so. So the, the good news is, is the, as I've been telling you, the work at Creighton Elementary will kind of take a slowdown over the, over the school year while we're working on the interior punch list, things of that nature from this past summer. And then we'll ramp it up again next summer as we expand the kitchen and serving line to make that building more efficient for its growing capacity and students there. So scheduled, the project is on schedule, and we will, we'll wrap it up in August of next year. Now, Moorhead Junior High, this is the new Moorhead Junior High, which will be those additional 500 seats that Dr. Heinz mentioned earlier this evening. You can see, we are making good progress. You can see on the upper part of the screen, the junior high track is coming into shape. The building itself is delivering and installing. So Sharkshell Steel is exceeding, or moving ahead of the other work. So the fun part is, is driving forward the, to the dry-in benchmark, dry-in benchmark for this. So you can see the exterior masonry is going on. Inside that building, we're starting to build the systems that make the, make the restrooms and the kitchen and things of that nature work on and in the building. That project is on schedule, and is scheduled to go open for students in August of 2023. Now, Connor High School, this is our major renovation project across the street here, where we are basically reorganizing the entire campus. So we worked hard over the summer, reorganizing the bus loop, which you're seeing around the right-hand side of the screen here. The big new parking lot on the top of the screen. Dirt is our story for the current period. So you can see in the dead center on the bottom of the screen is the new JV football field that's under construction. To the left side of the screen is the new athletics venue that'll join the main building as we start working our way around that campus. And then at the top center of the screen is the new CTE building pad, where we're building those new CTE rooms around what is the existing band hall that allow us to take some of the older buildings on that campus that have reached the end of their life out of service. So foundations are where every good project starts. And this is a picture of what the foundations look like for the athletic venues that we're working on currently. And then the more traditional looking foundation systems for the CTE building at the top of the hill are in progress. That building is currently on schedule, but will be on that site through the year, through the calendar year 2025.
Easy, what's the elevation change there from one end of that? Can you go to maybe that aerial shot again, just to kind of?
Certainly.
What is the elevation from maybe that band hall over to the track?
So from the band hall to the track, I mean, and I'm going to give you an estimate. It's not an exact figure, but it's about 28 feet. So as you can see from the size of these retaining walls around what will be the, ultimately, the finished floor of the gymnasiums, which are the top of those walls, you can see that is a, you know, about a nine-foot tall piece of equipment sitting right beneath the wall, reaching up on the top of it. So that'll give you an idea of the steps that we've got to go up to make those elevation changes on that site. Which ultimately, that's one of our major, major goals, is to help mitigate the elevation changes across that campus.
Thank you.
Now, move on to our new jet center, which is at Woodforce Bank Stadium. Again, we are marching forward to the dry-in benchmark for this building. You can see the roof deck is going in very nicely as we make our way across that building. The building exterior is in progress. From the field tie, you can see the building envelope taking shape on the inside of the stadium as well. And inside, we're seeing systems and walls, things that make the offices and the workspaces. That will make that place a very inviting environment for our staff to teach and learn, and teach and learn, how to teach and learn, if that makes good sense. So Mr. McCourt can't have all the good jokes.
Good point.
Now, our safety and security, oh, let me back up. We are on schedule. We're scheduled to open the spring of next semester, so January, February 2022. And we are marching forward on that schedule as anticipated. Our safety and security program for 2021 is a part of a district-wide effort. So again, you can't really see what's going on, but this is a good example of what our reception area see on our security monitors. So this is a floor plan of the building in which that reception is just sitting. So from here, we can monitor all of the exterior exits and entrances to the building. So if something were to, somebody were to come in or leave in an unauthorized manner, it would pop up here so that we can respond to those kind of issues promptly and immediately. So this is a district-wide effort. We're wrapping up the 2021 project this month. Our design teams and our contractor have been working together over the last several months, but building our scope for the 2022 installment, which we hope to bring you later this semester for your approval, so that we can continue this district-wide effort into 2022.
Easy.
Yes, ma'am.
These floor plans would not include any of the portable buildings?
Not typically. It's, it's hard to anticipate where a portable would be year to year. I mean, in, in, in theory, they are temporary in nature. So they may, in, on some campuses, I'll use Creighton as a great example. We anticipated them leaving that campus, and they did. And they're coming back because of the growth in that area. The district was more than it was anticipated. I mean, so it's, I mean, that's just one good example of why it's hard to put them on a, on a screen like this. Now, we do, and I'm going to speak for some other departments, we do make every attempt to put portables in a secured area of the campus, so that to get to them is through the front door, not around the side of the building. It's not always possible, but that's one of our charges.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, Gordon Reed Elementary, flex school number 21 in our library. So you can see this is a little bit more advanced, as Mr. McCourt said earlier today. But we do see the paving, the areas around the building have taken their shape. Building is marching forward, seems to be my word of the day, towards the dry-in benchmark. And they're working on the exterior of the building. So the roof is in progress, as you can see that white coming across the roof in the, in the picture. And the building exterior is what we're focusing on now. So this is a look towards the front door of that beautiful building. So we're going to start to see the personality and shape of that school as it comes together. And then, like other buildings, it is on schedule. It is scheduled to open in August of 2022. Now, Oak Ridge High School, this is our major overall project of that campus, and it also includes our South County CTE program. So the, the progress here is very subtle in the picture. I mean, we have had the unfortunate storm come through. We are in the, currently in the phase where the project of moving utilities that serve that campus. So Entergy has not been able to give us the crews that they had anticipated, because they're all focused on storm repairs in other parts of the country. CenterPoint and the gas utility likewise is, is in the same boat. So they're working at a much slower pace than we would like. But we are making our way through the campus, relocating those utilities. You see the dirt spot that, which used to be the bus drop-off area, is where the new admin will be located when that building is done. So you can see it is being prepared. And then in the fenced area on the left-hand side of the building, just over the tennis courts, will be the new central plant, and ultimately, the home of many of the new CTE programs that are coming to this campus. The project is currently on schedule, or reported to be on schedule. And because it's a long schedule, we can overcome some of these issues we've encountered this last few weeks. But we're scheduled to be on that campus through the summer of 2023. Now, Wilkerson Intermediate, this is our P classroom addition, where we've already talked about some supply chain disruptions over the last several months. And as you can see, we are making progress. We've got a contractor who has not given up on their schedule, and they're being innovative in their approach to completing that campus. So we've all looked at it and agreed and analyzed, and we're building the walls before we build the building, which is not how we would typically approach a project like this. But we have figured out a way so that we can continue on progress. The good news here is when the building delivers, which will be late next month in October, the walls will be cured and ready to paint, if that makes sense. So usually, our masonry walls have to cure for approximately 30 days before paint will stick to them. So we're getting ahead on that, which is a good part of the program. It's still going to be a monumental and heroic effort by our contractor, but they are determined to meet our obligation to turn that building over in January when the students return from the winter break. And we're doing everything we can to help support that process as well. So the schedule would be for this project to complete for use in January when we return from break. At Connor High School, ninth grade, this is classroom addition, where our, our experience with the supply chain at Wilkerson helped us prepare this bid. So another innovative contractor working to, to make their schedule work. If you'd seen this picture a week ago, we had steel standing up with no concrete underneath it, because we jumped on the concrete or on the steel order to try to get it as quickly as possible. We hit a good delivery window, and we got that window before we could get the concrete on the ground. Concrete contractor worked with us and finished the slab underneath that building without issue, without incident. And so that project is moving forward and is on schedule, and scheduled to be ready for students when they return in August from this coming winter break. And that's our update.
How'd you get that? Did you say the steel was up before the concrete? Or was it just out there?
No, the steel was standing up. So we columns, beams, and joists were in place. And so we, instead of pumping over the top of the structure like we would typically do, we just ran the pump underneath it. And then we're able to get it in there without any incident.
Okay. Just curious.
Thank you for your innovativeness.
Yeah. We try. So thank y'all.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Item 8A. Consider approval of medical air devices for the purpose of portable air cleaning units. And authorize a superintendent negotiate and execute all documents necessary to effectively purchase. All right. Mr. Rick Reeves.
Big words.
Okay.
I made my big words.
Back to our SAT words.
I think this is a read thing.
Not really, right, Kerry?
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we are requesting that the board approves a selection of medical air devices for an estimated expenditure not to exceed $1,700,000. Medical Air Devices, which is a hunting group company doing business as integrated viral protection solutions, is a provider of biodefense indoor air protection systems that instantaneously kills COVID-19 at a rate of 99.999% and other airborne pathogens without impacting the temperature of the environment. Unlike air purifiers that trap viruses and other pathogens and filters, the I V P system uses a heated filter using a metal mesh foam to catch and kill viruses of all species, along with other air pollutants such as allergens and mold, including influenza, anthrax, strep, and chickenpox. This patent pending technology targets air transmission to eliminate the virus, disinfect the air, and reduce a building's reliance of outside air mix. I V P offers mobile units in various sizes, including a venue mobile unit circulating up to 30,000 cubic feet over three to five times an hour, a room mobile unit for use in classrooms and rooms up to 2,000 square feet, and a travel unit for smaller spaces up to 250 square feet. These mobile units can be deployed in cafeterias, gyms, classrooms, and clinics throughout the district. Currently, these units are being used in over 100 healthcare facilities, including M.D. Anderson Cancer Center, Methodist Hospital, and the St. Justice Medical Center in the Houston area, as well as campuses in several school districts in Galveston I S D, Houston I S D, and San Angelo I S D. Texas Education Code, Section 4431A, requires that contracts for the purchase of certain goods and services valued at $50,000 or more in the aggregate be made by the method that provides the best value for the district. The board retains the authority to approve the purchases for which these cost is $50,000 or more to a single vendor over the course of the fiscal year. Procuring these devices through the district's interlocal contract with Omni Partners Cooperative, who selected vendors through the competitive proposal process for HVAC parts, installation services, and related products and services, was determined to be the method of purchase that provided the best value for the district. Funding will be provided from the general and/or special revenue funds. And at this time, we request your approval to purchase units as needed up to this not to exceed amount.
So move. Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Anybody have questions?
Are we connecting these to the HVAC system, or they stand?
Those are standalone systems.
And they'll be able to accomplish circulating that air? Let's say we have one in the corner, circulating air from this end of the whatever facility. You put it in?
Based on the size of the room, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Are we centralizing, or we put them in a corner somewhere?
It depends on the unit. So like the bigger units, the venue units would be like in a cafeteria. So it's, they're about this tall. So when, and then, like I said, it'll circulate three to five times, that air three to five times an hour.
What about the maintenance of? Many times the air flowing through something, I understand it's got a coil in there to heat, scale the germs, but it's not doing it to dust. So I would imagine they're giving off smell or some sort of smell. No smell?
No, sir. We tested a few of them at some of the campuses just to get an idea. And there was, didn't detect any.
What about maintenance? Do we have to change that the coil, the filtration?
Lifetime warranty on the, on the units. The filters are good for two years.
How often do the filters have to be cleaned?
Every two years.
Every two years?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a picture of one?
Um.
Is that what?
That's, yes, sir. That's what was back there, running. The, the large one is down the hall. It looks like a giant Coke machine. It's about that size as well. So what the, they are portable units, which will allow us to deploy them where we might need them in a, in a moment. The not to exceed's amount would, would be a full-scale implementation. It's not what we would anticipate starting with. We would start more with some pilots to, to try it out, to make sure that we're satisfied with what it is. And then we can ramp up to the full scale. What, what I mean by full scale would mean potentially a large unit for every campus to be placed, like in the commons or cafeteria. And then a number of the smaller units that could be placed in high-traffic areas. For example, like in an elementary school, the library, the music room, the art room, where a lot of different kids are coming and going. And then that would still also leave the principal potentially with a few additional units, so that, let's say, we were seeing an outbreak of, it could be COVID, but it could also be the flu or any type of bug. You know, first grade's having an outbreak of something, then let's deploy all these units into first grade classrooms to try to bring that down. So the mobility piece is a piece that we look at. They, they do offer a, a piece that can be added to the air handlers. It's something that we'll consider moving forward. We have a current solution that we're using for that in our new buildings to, to clean already, to clean air in our new buildings, kind of more centrally. This is just the more, the portable option that I think gives us a little bit of agility, more so than the, the built-in units do.
Okay.
And is there any results? I mean, do we have any studies or?
Yes, we, we have some information.
I'm not against them.
Yeah, no, we, we do have information. It's new technology, and I think that's part of what, for us, we want to move not all in at once, right? We want to continue to widen. watch. We, we've seen other school districts that have made this purchase in the last few months or implementing them more. Last year, there were some school districts that utilized them as well. You know, there, there's research. We all understand research is research. You can kind of make it say what you want. So.
Well, may I ask, who's, who, who is, have you researched this? You've looked at the?
We actually, I actually have.
And only, I'm not against that, just 1.7 million. I don't even know what we're talking about.
So I guess that's a match with their.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're gonna kind of test this thing out in larger areas or so first.
Correct.
Next question, on the electrical side, is it requiring any retrofitting or is it just standard plug and play? It seems like a pretty big, big machine to be.
Like I said, we tested some of these units. We took them to a few campuses, even the big units did not have any issues.
Okay. What about safety factors of them? Can kids stick their hand in these machines and go to town with them?
You're asking every question we ask.
Yes, that's it.
You are in sync.
Yes. No, no.
Can't do that?
No, sir.
I think Dr. Hines actually tried it.
Can we see your fingers, Dr. Hines?
He still has all tens. Yeah, he's all right. Yeah, he's.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The other school districts you mentioned, are they using them as portable devices too?
Correct, correct.
And they, they don't have any like opinion about them or?
No, with great, with great feedback. So.
Great feedback, okay.
Yes.
It's just, you know, it's, it's anecdotal at that, at that point. You know, they feel like they, they really helped them last year. You know, we didn't have a lot of viral spread last year either in our buildings and we didn't have these. So I think there's, there's still some question there. We do see the benefit well beyond COVID though. And we know, we understand you bring 1,000 kids or 4,000 high school kids into a building at any point, they can become germ factories. So even when we get past this, it, it still, I think, has a benefit of making a healthier environment for our children and our teachers. And that's a, you know, we, we think that's important.
Anything that don't require any additional water or anything like that? It's just plug and play?
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned the filters have to be replaced every two years?
Every two years.
What is the cost of a filter?
On the big units, it's $250 per unit.
Oh.
On the small unit, it's $150.
And what's the brand again?
It's IVP Air.
IVP Air. Have we, is this the same vendor that the other districts are using?
Yes.
Okay. What, do you, can you share anything about that company or?
Yeah, actually, they're, like I said, they're part of Hunt and Train. So if you want, we can actually bring up Dr. Garrett Peel, if he wants to kind of give a little bit, brief summary of the, the company.
See, Hunt and Train is the same train, AC train?
Part of it, yes.
It may vary as well?
If I'm correct, and I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that our local universities, University of Houston, Texas A&amp;M have been involved and perhaps there is a local tie to the company as well here at Conroe ISD.
A local tie? Does that mean?
I think there are some of the employees that actually live here, maybe even the founder potentially.
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
His name?
Monza Hirani. So Monza Hirani founded this company at the end of March. He's a medical real estate developer, owns MediStar Corporation. This is an FDA-approved device for emergency use for COVID-19. It is the only airborne solution endorsed by the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, as well as by the Engineering News Record as Engineer of the Year for this technology.
I don't mean to cut you off, but what was your name?
I'm Dr. Garrett Peel. I'm a fellow of the American College of Surgeons. I trained at the Mayo Clinic as well as hold a master's in public health and epidemiology from Johns Hopkins.
You're not an orthopedic doctor, right?
I am not.
We have them coming here now.
I'm a surgeon, a general surgeon, but, yeah. So, you know, we, we deployed the Slidell ISD a year ago and campus-wide. And the TEA released data just last week that showed Slidell was at the very bottom of the list for spread of COVID-19, as well as Galveston ISD across their campus K through 12. And we've had excellent results across the state from Kamal Benketti, Ricardo ISD, Fort Worth, and, and just now San Angelo as well. So lots of ISDs working through this. And this is all data-driven. It's scientifically based. We were the first to, to be investigated by the Galveston National Lab, the federal lab for essentially this technology, as well as proof of concept was replicated at the University of Houston Superconductivity Center, as well as Texas A&amp;M Engineering Experiment Station. This was the first technology in the world to show an instantaneous catch-and-kill of submicron virus with a single pass without essentially impacting any kind of ambient air temperature. And so we're here to be long-term partners with Conroe and help provide technological solutions based on science.
All right, I like.
Yes, sir.
If it uses heat, what does that do to the room temperature?
It does not change the ambient air. It's a proprietary technology that we've developed so that it does not change the ambient room temperature.
Is it basically, and just real roughly, is it like a bug zapper?
So it's the only technology.
I'm just trying to think, how would heat would not change the temperature?
It's the only technology shown to catch and kill instantaneously in a single pass. So essentially, this is combining the world's best filtration of a HEPA filter at 99.997 with that of the biodefense filter and marrying them together. And doing that, we're able to catch allergens and pollen and all of the, you know, stuff that we would try to catch in the air normally, but then also provides a biodefense against a submicron virus. Keep in mind, the coronavirus is .1 micron or so. The HEPA filter is able to catch .3 micron. So in order for even just a HEPA filter to catch anything, in which it doesn't kill anything, to catch anything, it has to be combined with a, a particle that is at least .2 or 3 microns. So keep in mind RSV, strep, that many districts are battling right now, influenza, rhinovirus, and anything that could come is much larger than coronavirus as .1 micron. So this really provides not only a, a way to provide an infrastructure and the science to, to fight and win COVID-19 potentially in the air as an extra benefit of security, an extra layer of protection, does not replace masks, does not replace CDC guidance, but provides that extra layer of protection, but also focuses on disinfecting the, the air that we breathe and elevating the science of air biology and protecting the air streams for our children and teachers and staff. And we have seen even where my children attend in HISD, I have four little girls, we've, we've seen a, a, a real benefit in the numbers. And there's data to show that this, albeit anecdotal, but there is data to show that there is significant improvement of person-to-person transmission and person-to-person staff. For example, Galveston has had not one student with on-campus transmission and contact tracing to classrooms where this technology has been deployed for now over six months. And so, as well as Slidell, as well as others. So the data drives that. And again, if there is virus in the airstream, this technology will kill it instantly. And this, 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 this technology, we feel, is, is really a benefit to making our campuses safe and protected, as well as providing an infrastructure for the future and safety for, for other airborne diseases.
The school districts that you mentioned, they have like masking in place or is there like a comparable school district without masking in place?
Well, the, the data, the data that we're collecting right now combine districts that have masks as well as no masks. For example, Slidell has a no-mask mandate. And so it's optional. Galveston has a mask mandate and, and the data is comparable.
And just a couple of notes on our end, things that we have done. We, we have brought, brought in units and taken them to a number of our campuses to check the electrical use to see if they would work. There is a potential that in some places, we may need to come in and put it in a dedicated circuit in an older building, but we used them and they worked presently. We tried them at a multiple generations of our buildings in a day. We, we moved them around. In addition to that, like I said, we did try the safety testing. Could we stick anything in, in it? And, and we had them run all day to kind of check the heat to see, you know, did it really, did it heat a room up or not? And we didn't experience that in, in our testing of the units either. So as far as the, the funding goes, we do have money through, you know, through, through money that we have for COVID relief to fund this. However, there are also multiple grant opportunities that are out there. So for us, it would be seeking out grant money as well to help fund this so that we, we wouldn't necessarily have to use all money that's available in our general fund. We may be able to get outside sources to help us fund this initiative as well.
Has any other school district successfully paid for theirs with a?
The grants have just been released. So that's part of the, the challenge is the money is not yet available. We're gonna, we're just gaining information. I think Chris actually, was it today that we had a webinar on that or?
One just today or another one tomorrow.
Okay. So we're, we're learning more.
And Dr. Null, independent school districts are voting for use of ESR funds to be able to, to pay for these as well. Because a part of, of, of that mandate is for school districts to help provide an extra layer of technology for the air streams, whether it be through filtration in their air handler units or through air purification systems within classrooms and or high-density areas.
But just to be clear, there's no like definitive result other than anecdotal that we could?
No, ma'am. This has been peer-reviewed. This is the largest private-public partnership in Texas for COVID-19, led by the University of Houston Texas Superconductivity Center. That data was then replicated by the Texas A&amp;M Engineering Experiment Station by Dr. Kathy Banks, who's now the president of Texas A&amp;M. Her team was the first in history to show a sub-second kill of submicron coronavirus in history. Then that data was taken to the Galveston National Lab. And that, that, that data was the first of its kind in U.S. history to show aerosolized SARS-CoV-2, actual SARS-CoV-2 passing through a technology. And when we did that initially, we found a three to four log reduction. And then Munzer, the inventor, said, go back, I want more data. And we increased the concentration over 270-fold, the largest amount of virus that has ever been passed through a technology aerosolized. And we showed a 99.999% reduction, leading to emergency use authorization by the FDA, as well as endorsement by the American Society of Mechanical Engineers. In addition, the chief of aerobiology at UTMB said, if we can show a 50% reduction of spores, I'm a surgeon, so we test the air for spores. And if you have spores in the room, it's not clean air. And then he said, okay, if we can show 50%, we really have made progress. And so we ran this through with a lot of, a concentration of billions and billions of spores, even we increased that over 70-fold and found a 99.98% instantaneous kill, not a 50% kill, but 100%, near 100% kill of, of spores through the technology. And so it, it's, it's, it's really a, a paradigm shift in how we look at how we can safeguard our air streams in our schools, as well as other environments throughout the, that which we live. That was led to a peer-reviewed paper that was published. And then also, there had been three other papers published based upon that data. So it's, it's very much a non-anecdotal, it's, 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 it's data that, that is, is replicable and peer-reviewed and proven and then published. And then also, we've done clinical efficacy testing with our partners at Post-Acute Medical that have shown in the healthcare environment, a removal of, of SARS-CoV-2 in the air. This is also a technology, the only technology that has been endorsed and partnered by the Texas Hospital Association, of which is, is now in, in over 100 campuses statewide for hospitals as well.
Ms. Chase, the TEA has recently released a document called Indoor Antivirus Air Filtration Systems Can Increase Student Attendance and Health. And they cite two different studies and some anecdotal evidence out of Connecticut and out of Omaha, Nebraska, but they also specifically reference two of these peer-reviewed papers that themselves have academic source citations in them.
And this, this?
It's not this specific proprietary technology, but it's this same concept of antiviral air filtration.
Okay. Okay.
And this information first came to us through my conversations with the commissioner. So the commissioner actually called me personally and asked that, you know, knew that what we were dealing with about a month ago and called me personally and said, you know, this is a new technology that I've seen, we've seen it working in other places. We feel like you all should, you know, look into it. That's what started us on this process.
This specific company?
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is what they have deployed in the Travis Building in the TEA offices?
Correct. They have deployed them at TEA. And so.
This, this?
Yes.
This particular technology.
Company and technology.
Correct.
Earlier in the month, I saw these in the SBOE meeting room in the Travis Building.
Okay. And you mentioned it was local company and there's no like ties to?
No, we don't have any ties. We didn't know anything about them. I just know that they're Houston-based. So that, one of the significance of that is the ability to get product here quicker because there is a Houston warehouse, which allows us to, you know, if we do decide to make a purchase, we can have them here. That was one of our concerns through conversation was this would be great. We decided to buy them and it's a six-month, you know, out time. What, what good will that do us? And they've assured us that there is local stock, which is significant.
And just one last question. You mentioned this amount is a not to exceed, so you would go in slowly. So what, what is the plan? And how do you, how are you going to judge if it's successful or not to continue?
Yeah, I think the initial conversation would be, we'll have to circle back to our team to decide what campuses we may begin with. You know, so are we seeing places where we'd have outbreaks? I think we'd want to see both units or, or all three. I guess there's a small unit as well. But we may move more quickly with our clinics. So perhaps we would, you know, go ahead and, and deploy one into every clinic because we know that that's an issue. And then go with some of the classroom units, some of the cafeteria units. It will be hard to isolate to know for sure if it's this unit or what other, you know, it's hard to stand it alone. We can, we know that we can analyze the data because we collect it very easily on our positivity rates and within the building. So we, you know, we can do those comparisons. It's just, will it stand out enough to know? That I'm not sure, you know?
It's a big investment.
It is.
But we want to make sure the return is worth it.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Guess that's where I go. Well, thank you for all those great questions. I had a lot of them in my mind and you, you answered, you talked to it really well. But it, it is a peculiar time to put these in place now because our numbers are coming down across the board. And I don't know how we measure the success of, of putting the units in. I understand the technology, but that's kind of my hesitation as well as the, the timing, the timing and it is now, our numbers are coming way down. How do we measure the success rate of this? Because we, we wouldn't be putting this in place for strep throat. We wouldn't be putting this in place for, you know, for the common flu that we go through on, on an annual basis. We want to do it for COVID, but our COVID numbers are coming down.
Yeah, and I, I would, I would argue that doing it for strep throat or the flu wouldn't be out of line either.
I'm sorry, what?
Because I would argue that doing it for strep throat or the flu would not be out of.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm saying, I don't know that we would be entertaining this.
True.
We didn't have.
No doubt. What I, what I would remind us all is that, you know, 1% in average daily attendance is $2.5 million of funding. So if deploying something like this helps one, reduce our absent rate by 1.1%, it's actually.
I, I think it's a nominal investment. I think you say you get a couple kids sick and that leads to, you know, five or six kids sick and that leads to, you know, it becomes a domino effect, especially when you take the attendance numbers into consideration and what that return would be. If you want to quantify it that way as opposed to quantify it in, in the form of how many kids are we preventing or keeping healthy and our staff we keeping healthy?
Now, what I'm thankful for, Mr. Hubert, is your point is well-made. As we sat actually in here about four weeks ago and, and had conversations, we first started talking about these, what we were hopeful during that time, when our numbers were at their highest, we had the conversation that by the time we get to the board meeting, I hope our numbers are so low that we'll all look at each other and think, do we need to do this? Like we, we said those words. And, and so I think it's fair and I'm happy that we're at a place that we can have this conversation. Because four weeks ago, we were not in this place to be considering, you know, is it really necessary? So I am thankful that we're, that we've gotten here.
Right.
But at the same time, things are relative, right? Our numbers are still such that while they are way better than they were four weeks ago, and we've been desensitized a little bit to today's numbers because of what they were. and we've been desensitized a little bit to today's numbers because of what they were, our absentee rate's still twice what it normally is.
But as near as I can tell, it's a one-time investment. It's like, like it's repetitive, right? I mean, same thing with our security measures. We came in and put vestibule and major security to overhaul and those at a time when unfortunately school shootings were at, at an all-time high and, and we made that investment and didn't necessarily look at the financial impact of it. We knew there was something that needed to be done and we immediately jumped to it. So.
If I could use that example, that's, that's a great time. I'm not, I'm, once again, like Mr. Rem and everybody else, I'm not necessarily against it. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with everything we're talking about, but the vestibules, we had the money to do it for all the campuses. My understanding is we're only, we're only giving enough money to do a select number. And, you know, if we're investing in our district and our kids, I don't, I don't want any of our schools to be left off because we didn't have the funding or there wasn't the equipment for it. I mean, how, how can we get arms around being able to, to provide this for all of our, all of our students?
And that's the, the not-to-exceeds amount to cover all campuses. So it's, yes, that, and that's why we've asked for, for the full amount now at once rather than, you know, come back next month, the next month, which could slow down the progress. You know, if, if you all directed us today to go full implementation tomorrow, that's what we would do. Our, our plan, I think, would be to roll out a little slower and see if we could get some of this grant funding to offset the cost. I think that makes the most sense. But this, this amount that is your ask today does cover every campus. It's not a, it wouldn't be a pick and choose.
If we believe in it, we believe in it, whether the funding, you know, not to say that it's not a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but we have the money. We have our general account. We have a rainy, we, we have the money for it. I don't know if the grant is going to work out or not. We, we don't know. I'd hate for us to.
Postpone.
If we believe in it.
Right.
Why are we not doing it? And we'll figure out if there's grant money available later on.
I agree, but I mean, most of those grants, you can't retro that stuff.
Correct.
Potentially?
Correct. That's, that's what we anticipate, that we could not retro it.
We could not.
But we're learning more.
I think we can.
We think we can now?
Most of it is getting money back.
I think we can go back a few months.
If we can retro it, then it certainly allows us to speed up implementation to every campus. Because to be able to retro, go back and get it, that would, that would open the door for a much speedier.
But we could also use ESER money as well.
I think if we get the money, as great as we don't, that's fine too, but.
Is that federal or state, Texas?
We're not using ESER, right?
I didn't hear you do.
The grant, federal or Texas?
Yeah.
That I don't know.
Yeah. ESER money does come with different, because it's federal money, it comes with different ties. And so that's not, you know, we're trying to, other grant and then we have the local funds.
Mr. Reese, could you tell me the cost again one more time?
No more than.
No more than.
No more than.
That would be full implementation.
So, oh, go ahead.
If you don't mind, and how, if this gets approved today, how quickly could you, could you move? I know you said they're in stock, but how, what are we talking about here?
Yes, two to, two, three weeks.
Two to three weeks?
We'll have them installed, yes.
And then I know that there's the maintenance is every two or three years. I'm assuming that we would have a contract with your company to come do that maintenance? We're not in charge of that because we don't want to avoid any warranties, correct?
Yes, correct.
And that would just be some kind of ongoing?
And only someone from your company would be the ones that could do the maintenance? Just one more, sorry.
This is good. Oh, this is great. We, we wanted, we wanted this conversation. We appreciate it.
Yeah. So like, I'm not a doctor and none of us are doctors here, but, you know, the Montgomery County Public Health advisement letter came out recommending some actions. Did they have any kind of, is there any kind of opinion on this as an effective mitigating?
You know, we, we haven't, I don't know that we have asked that question directly of them. We certainly could. I think it's something that we could share.
My concern is, you know, it's a big investment and I, I just don't know like how comfortable I am with.
Do you think you'd be against it?
I don't know.
Is that what your thought is?
Not against it, but just.
Potentially skeptical or not, yeah.
Are we going to get our money's worth, right? Does this really mitigate the risk enough to make that investment?
It just depends on how you value giving your money, return on investment. I don't look at it as a financial return on investment. We prevent a couple of kids or a classroom or.
And it could, that could translate into financial too, though. You know, with that two, 1%.
Yeah, but I, I hate for us to look at.
No, 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 I'm just saying that it's secondary. That's a secondary.
Well, it's not, it's.
An AC unit here costs ridiculous amounts of money.
I think that's a fair, that's a fair statement, like perhaps this for, Mr. Foster, what does a, what does a single AC unit in a new building? When we replace an AC unit, just for perspective, what is the cost of that?
It's crazy.
Our case going on with your school, one of the organizations, about $3 million.
Yeah. So it'd be, you know, okay. For what, it's one unit in one school and they may have how many units?
Come out of the school?
Yes.
Six to eleven units, seven to eight.
Okay.
So looking at the cost perspective, that makes it, puts it a little bit more perspective.
From what I can see, it looks like it's small, medium and large, basically. Are you, what are those roughly prices in the small, medium, large? Per unit?
The large, the venue units were $9,999. The classroom unit, the small unit, like you guys saw on the back, is 1,500. And there's a desktop unit that's 500.
And, and piggybacking your question, you said only, it's proprietary technology, so only y'all can clean them on the maintenance side of it every two years? Is that what I heard?
So the, the after-sale management is done with our partners, which train HVAC and hunting group. So they, they will be here to, to train your folks and there really is not that much of, of, of maintenance at all.
So there's not a maintenance thing where we're contracted in long-term with?
No, no, no.
Okay. They'll, they'll train our people.
The, the maintenance comes with the, with the sale price.
Well, I just don't want to lose the, the warranties. I mean, you're saying that these are lifetime warranties and we're doing the maintenance on them. I don't want that to void, there's, I don't want that voiding anything. These are, these are big investments.
Yes.
I'm going to buy one of the 500 ones myself. I am.
Yeah, but I mean, if this is something that's going to, going to protect our, our students, you know, we, we know this is a hot topic right now and, you know, there's a school district doing everything they can. And this type of technologies, to me, seems to make more sense than other things that have been suggested.
I mean, we're absent mass, so it seems like a no-brainer for me.
Yeah. I'm much more comfortable with it, you know, reading the pamphlet with the peer-reviewed information and.
If they're comfortable, I might change their mind.
I already looked you up on the stock market. They're not publicly traded. I was buying stock.
I, I would move approval for medical air devices for purchase of portable air cleaning units and authorize superintendent to negotiate and execute all documents necessary to effectuate the purpose.
I second.
Second, second.
We already had that.
We already had it.
Have a formal move.
Before discussion, that was before discussion.
Okay, in that case, I call a question.
Call a question.
I second.
All right, very good. Okay, so, yep, that is the motion. We have everything here. Okay, we'll call, call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, show by indicated sign. Any opposed by the same sign? All right, very good.
Yeah, work hard on that one, Dean. That's for you.
Thank you. Harden, buy staples or papers.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Board of Trustees. We, we'll do good.
No, 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 we moved. No, we didn't. We didn't?
Do we move? Okay. Item 8B, receive financial reports. All right, Mrs. Carson.
I promise mine won't be that complicated. Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements for the month ended August 31st, 2021. First statement is our balance sheet. The balance sheet shows the district's assets and liabilities. In the general fund, we have total assets of 230.1 million. In debt service, 20.6 million. In child nutrition, 3.1 million. And in self-funded insurance, 10.5 million. This is our income statement as of August 31st, 2021. In the general fund, we have total revenue of 565 million, total expenditures of 481 million. We will, over the next several weeks, be preparing all of our year-end closing entries in preparation for the closeout of our fiscal year. In debt service, we have total expenditures of 104 million. That does represent our second debt payment of the year that was made last month. It's our 2019 bond referendum status. To date, we have expended or encumbered $274.2 million, leaving 377.5 remaining. Our self-funded insurance update, August was a rough month, not quite as rough as we had anticipated. Total revenue, 4.3 million, total expenses of just over 4.4. For a deficit of the month for 116, we ended the year with a deficit of 59,000, so not too bad. Our participation at the wellness centers was 400 for the month of August, so we averaged 347 for the year.
Were you talking about underfunding in proportion?
Our investments as of August 31st, our par value, 552.6 million. The pools are yielding .075. Our investments with Wood Forest National Bank at 14 basis points. One thing to note about our Wood Forest investments, beginning September 1st, is a result of our RFP for the bank depository bid that was done over the summer. They have offered us a somewhat attractive rate on this money market fund beginning September 1. We will be earning 90-day T-bill plus 25 basis points. So that will equate to 29 basis points for the month of September, so we will be taking advantage of that.
29 basis point on what dollar amount? Equate that to hard dollars, Ron.
On the amount that we have in there right now, which is about 40 million, it will equate to about an additional 60,000 a year in interest revenue. So our combined portfolio is weighted average of charity of 55 days, yielding just over 17 basis points. And then our 90-day T-bill is .04, which is our benchmark.
We're looking for 1.4, 1.7 million.
Yes.
Good luck. These are trades.
$60,000 on the way there.
There you go. Every little bit help.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. All right, I think that executive session.
All right, a closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such close or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be either A, this public meeting upon the reconvening of the public meeting, or B, at the sequential public meeting of the board upon notice thereof, as the board shall determine. A closed session of the board will now be held. The time is 7:42. The board is now in open session at 8:37. The next giant agenda item is, now let's see, this is 11A, consider revision of local board policy, DEC, compensation, benefits, and absences.
So this health you saw last time, just a few years, you know, déjà vu. Well, the legislature passed two laws that required us to go back and add some additional leaves to DEC. This is just to you for information, this time and adoption is next time. But the two leaves were prompted by, first one is House Bill 2073, and it's the quarantine leave bill for law enforcement. And this bill requires that any law enforcement person, it could be an EMS or whoever, but for us, it would be our police department, it would be the only people that qualify for it, to not be penalized in compensation or any other loss of benefits that they are required to quarantine by the local health authority or by, in our case, the superintendent. And so that, we're adding that leave is required by a lot of the policy. The other one is Senate Bill 1359, and that one offered a mental health leave for peace officers. And that was for any peace officer who suffered a traumatic event, the, you know, their, their agency, their, you know, whether it's the city, the county, the school district would have to provide them some form of paid mental health leave. The, the particulars of it could be determined by each local jurisdiction. We decided when we were visiting about making, we decided to make a recommendation view that it would apply to all of our employees in the district because if a traumatic event happened at our school, it certainly would impact more than just police officers, you know, the, the unique nature of the school district. And so we're asking, or the way that the policy is currently drafted is to apply it to all employees across the board. And then we just tweaked the name of one of our other leaves to try to make it a little bit more clear perhaps to employees what it is. We are recommending changing what had been called unpaid leave to non-FMLA leave because it's really designed for people who don't qualify for FML leave, people who have been here less than a year and not worked in program for the hours, and has the same exact qualifying reasons as FML, it would just be for those ones to be unqualified. So that, those are the changes were made to DEC that we'll be asking for your approval for in October.
Okay. Very much any questions? All right, moving on to 11B, nominate the 2022, 2023 Montgomery Central Appaisel District Board of Directors.
So some of you, I don't know how many times you've done this, it's just like all the time, right? So it's that time of year, again, to nominate, you can nominate, you know, nobody or, you know, each nominate five, it's entirely up to you. I did send you the qualifications for them so that you could review them ahead of time. Last time you nominated Bruce Tough, Barry Blanton, and Bonar Louzey, that he, Barry Blanton has indicated he's.
He didn't run wrong.
Yeah.
You know, be selected again. And Peggy Houseman is already the nominee of the MUDs. They have a separate process than the other taxing jurisdictions and she is their nominee again. And my understanding is the other remaining members are still interested in serving if any entity nominates them. We're early in the process just because of the timing of our board meetings, so I don't know that anyone else at this point has been nominated other than this Houseman.
So in a nutshell, if I understand it correctly, there's one open vacancy because Barry Blanton is.
There's five, there's five. Every year, they all get elected every year, every other year, all five are out.
Assuming we keep Bonar Louzey and Bruce Tough, who we elected, who have both expressed interest of continuing to serve, how many would that rely on?
You can, you could do more than there are places for, just because you nominate can, doesn't mean you have to captain you your votes for them. They would just appear on the ballot for all the taxing jurisdictions, you know, to select from.
Yeah, but if we put ours in, we, we almost guarantee them.
You would think if you nominated, then you would vote for them, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. But, you know, there's no requirement to do that.
So we're nominating now?
Yes. The way nominations work is you can just throw out a name, it doesn't require, a second, it doesn't require a vote.
Okay. I nominate Mark Frank.
I nominate Arthur, Better, Better, Betterhoff?
Breedenhoff.
Breedenhoff?
Yes.
And Adam Simmons.